You could hear me.
All righty. Okay, this is City Council Workshop for the city of Bonnie Lake dated October 4th, 2022. Let's call this meeting to order. First order of business is to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Clerk, are you feeling okay? If you're not home, I think we have a pro tem here who can take over for you.
Casey's gonna take over.
Oh, right on. Okay, well, let's have the roll called.
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin. Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLeimans.
Here.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Baldwin, is she appearing?
She's sick at home.
Oh, okay.
Attending.
Well, let's have a motion to excuse her.
And so moved. Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor of allowing, um, Councilmember Baldwin to be sick and be home? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, any, any opposed for the record? I'd love to see that, then.
We'll note Mr. Sullivan is shaking his head, so we'll tell.
Okay, so Councilmember Baldwin is excused from our meeting today. Okay, so we don't have any presentations, so let's open this up for open discussion. Do we have any open discussion? Uh, Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so I received, um, an email through my council account and, um, about that we're gonna be offering, uh, get a flu shot inside of the building. So I was, I filled out the, or I, um, printed out the insurance claim form consent influenza immunization form. And so I'm reading here and it says, "I have read the adverse reactions associated with the influenza vaccine." Um, "A copy of the vaccine manufacturer's drug information sheet is available upon request." Okay, um, "I had the opportunity to ask questions about the immunization and I have been offered a copy of the vaccine information statement, um, for the vaccine being administered. I asked that the immunization be given to me or the person named below for whom I am authorized to make this request for myself, my heirs, executors, et cetera, et cetera." And then it says, "I hereby release Get a Flu Corporation, School, School District, Physician and/or Medical Director and their respective affiliates, subsidiaries, division, director, contractors, agents, and employees from any and all claims arising out of, in connection with, or in any way related to my receipt of this vaccine." So it's basically, it's releasing liability to the schools and, and all of the, um, corporations. But I don't see anywhere where it states that the city of Bonnie Lake or the Justice Center is going to be released from any, um, liability. Um, so a concern is that we're having people come here during work hours to get a vaccine, which it's stating that "I read the adverse reactions." Well, this, this is all there is. So there's no adverse reaction information and there's no manufacturer's information. So I called the company and I asked them if I could have them email me a copy of the information. And the person that does the scheduling was out on a job. So that's not available before I would sign this consent form. So if I don't have information on the adverse reactions and I don't have information on the manufacturing, then am I truly giving a, um, a consent? Is this informed consent that, that our people are give, giving and they're releasing all liability?
And, uh, what date is that? Uh, I'm sorry, when is it?
I believe it's like October 19th or something. It's sometime this month. I, I didn't bring my computer, but I'm just concerned about liability if somebody's injured. I mean, there, there, every vaccine has, has a, an adverse reaction. And, um, so I looked it up online because I couldn't get it tonight. And some of the, you know, some of the adverse reactions are vomiting, dizziness, um, Dion Barré, which is a permanent syndrome that you can get and it's actually listed as one of the major side effects of the flu vaccine. And then I went on the CDC website and they stated that thermosol is, does not cause harm if you put it into a vaccine. Well, for the flu, well, that's actually mercury and it's a neurotoxin. So yes, there are adverse reactions to thermosol. So I'm just concerned that if somebody's injured or somebody is hurt and we don't specifically have Bonnie Lake Justice Center put into their documentation, you know, is there going to be liability? And are these people getting fully informed consent before they agree to have an injection put into their body? So it's just, it's a big concern for me because, um, it is.
No, I understand.
Maybe I could, maybe I could provide a little bit of background. So this is a, a service that we've been providing our employees through our wellness program for many number of years now. Previously, it was done during a Harvest Party event over at the Senior Center. You know, I'm not familiar with that form that you're quoting. It is purely voluntary. There is no requirement for anybody to get the flu vaccine. So if you want to get it, you can get it. And it's a service that we're offer, offering up to our employees through the cities' wellness program.
So it's purely voluntary?
Purely voluntary.
And only to city employees?
I, Brian, I don't know, is it open to?
It says that you can bring friends, they accept walk-ups, it's $35 if you don't have insurance. Yeah, well, I mean, I think it, it might say families. I believe the benefits outweigh the risk. I voluntarily assume full responsibility. Let's see, um, well, it talks about, um, my, for myself, my heirs, executors, personal representatives, and assigns. And then it says, "I agree that I am responsible for reimbursing the amount of $35 if I don't have active insurance." So I don't know, it did, it does say somewhere in here that they accept walk-ups. But.
There is another document that is provided to employees and their families and it's, um, vaccine information statement. Um, it's a two-page vaccination, uh, document from the city. When I get vaccinated, um, talk with your healthcare provider, so it has some more details.
Does it give the side effects?
And for our recording, it's, uh, Brian Sandler, our HR manager responding to this.
So do your own research or?
Well, it's, I mean, it's a two-page paper.
Yeah. Okay, I just, I'm just concerned about, you know, what informed consent means to, to people, you know, and are they gonna actually do the research? It says, "I read the adverse reactions associated with the influenza vaccine." And then it says, "A copy of the manufacturer's drug information will be provided upon request." And I'm thinking, like, for me, if I'm gonna do this, I want the information before I sign a consent form. I want to be able to read what the side effects are. But anyway, that's just, my concern is liability. And if we've been doing this for a very long time, but we, our city is not specifically mentioned in this. It talks about schools, it talks about the people administering the shots. Um, it does say something about corporations and subsidiaries, so I don't know if we need to be specifically named in something like this, but liabilities are big.
Well, when I studied towards, what, 30 some odd years ago, it sounds like a standard release, but I am gonna defer to, um, our deputy city attorney to, um, add to that. Uh, and assumption of the risk, if you wouldn't mind mentioning that, too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, regarding the liability from like an injury to the vaccine, there was, um, a federal program that was established back in the eighties, the National Vaccine Injury Compensation Program. So there's the whole process where if a person, um, is injured by a vaccine or has a really severe reaction, they go to a federal court and there's a program where they can be compensated through that federal program with monies that are set aside for that. So that kind of helps alleviate the city of any potential liability.
Okay, so I know that they did away with that for the COVID-19 shots. So you cannot get reimbursed for any injuries with COVID. But I don't know if they changed that because COVID, if it changed with the influenza shots, but nobody's getting help with COVID injuries. So I don't know, I don't know if we're offering COVID shots or if this is specifically just.
This is just specifically flu shots.
Okay.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just had a question in regards to that, bringing up the city of Bonnie Lake and whatnot, because it's, it sounds like it specifically mentions school districts and people that are doing that. And so I guess why would they mention that and not the city of Bonnie Lake?
It sounds to me, it's just like a generic form, but I guess, you know, Brian could look into it with the vendor tomorrow and see.
I think it would be worth looking into and if we need to add the city of Bonnie Lake on there just for our own protection.
Or just have a specific one for our employees, you know? And I would suggest that we make sure that the adverse, there's the VAERS reports, so, which is, um, vaccine, um, adverse reactions, um, system through CDC. And so I would say maybe some of the VAERS reports could be made available ahead of time in the future so that people can actually, since it says "I have read adverse reactions," I mean, I had to look it up on Google, so, because it wasn't on their website either as far as it just says, you know, "Talk to your doctor." These are some things that could possibly happen, but it's very rare. And, you know, nothing's rare when it, when it comes to your body, when it happens to you, then it doesn't feel rare.
Question I have for that is, you've mentioned the "I have read" part, uh, you know, a couple times here. Are, are you saying that there, if they sign it, they're saying that they have read it, but we haven't, uh, supplied any information for them to read?
I mean, it's on this information, it's the very first line here. It says, "I have read the adverse reactions associated with the flu vaccine." And then the very next sentence, it says, "A copy of the vaccine manufacturer's drug information sheet is available upon request."
I see.
So I have to come and I either have to call ahead to get it emailed to me, which is what I did tonight. And then, or I have to come in a few minutes early to read through the pages. But I know if you're actually looking at the manufacturer's form, it's got writing that's, um, you need a couple of microscopes to be able to read. And it's about 10 pages long and it's about this big. It's a little booklet that comes inside of the vaccine itself, because I actually have read it. And it's very hard to.
Well, Mr. Sandler, could you do two things? Uh, the deputy mayor's request in, uh, with the vendor, whether we can get the city of Bonnie Lake added to the form. And then the second thing being, uh, if they are gonna supply that, the document that Councilmember Fullerton is concerned about, about reading for the adverse reactions. And, uh, Councilmember Evans?
In 1949, the city of Bonnie Lake became a municipal corporation, um, which is a, uh, local governing body that waivers says corporations and their subsidies. I would presume that we would fall under that clause.
Okay.
Okay. All right, anybody, uh, do we have any further open discussion? Uh, Councilmember Watson?
Just real quick, anyone that'll join me, the chamber has their luncheon on the 20th at Mazatlan. I will be there, so have you join me also? So lots of people hopefully be there and the information, too.
What time?
As long as it's Mazatlan, I'll go.
Mazatlan starts 11:30 to 1 o'clock.
All right, thank Councilmember Watson. Any, any further open discussion before we move on? Councilmember Swatman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I understand there was a issue with the water billing and I didn't know exactly where we were gonna be on that, because it sounded like, um, the mayor was recommending that we go back and bill people for charges that they hadn't, hadn't seen before. And I would think that would, could possibly be some extraordinary charges for some people that weren't expecting significant charges on their water bills if they're in those top tiers.
Well, I'm gonna defer to Ms. Ryerson on that particular issue.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, I don't anticipate, I mean, there's 5,000 total customers. I'm anticipating about $500,000, um, that's due. Uh, I would expect most people not to get, you know, huge charges. They are the normal summer rates they would normally see. They're seeing them now on their bills after July and August. It's that the July and August were missed. Um, July is the city, August is the county, so it's not like they had two months that they'll have to back pay. You have one on July, one on August, so 5,000 total. Like I said, I'm estimating about $500,000. I'm, we don't know the breakdown of commercial yet, but I'm thinking a lot of it's commercial.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? I'm sorry?
I didn't think that, well, you know, the commercial ones aren't as concerning to me because I think they're probably smaller water users. It's probably a lot of the outer-city users that are in higher tiers or what have you. But I, I don't know, you know, is it, I think it's an odd recommendation by the mayor, actually, to go back and try to charge for that, because that's something that, you know, if a company, it's like a customer, right, that walked into your store and bought the stuff, they didn't walk out and steal the stuff, they bought it for the price it was on the shelf, paid for it while it was on the shelf, and then they were gone. And you tracked them down a month later and said, "Oh, by the way, I had the wrong price on that. You need to pay me more for that product." That, that seems to be kind of the situation in, in the scenario there. I understand that it's a public utility, but I also understand that people are, you know, some of these bills can be significant. And I don't know how you annotate that on their bill, how you go back and tell them, you know, "This is what you were charged, this is what you needed to be charged, here's your extra." You know, what, what does that mean to them? Does that mean you're gonna turn off their water if they don't char, you know, pay the bill up? I don't, you know, all those details of how we're gonna go around that? Because it, again, it seems to me it would be, you know, if you're running a business, that you just write that off. You say, "Yeah, that was, that was an error."
And, uh, Ms. Ryerson, yeah, could you respond, please?
Yeah, I can respond. Um, it was actually the recommendation of our city attorney, Kathleen, um, to move forward with billing. She doesn't feel that we have the authority to not bill. There's, uh, case law out there that indicates that we need to bill. The mayor simply agreed with the city attorney and, uh, my perspective. The issue comes, uh, the biggest issue in my mind is you're working on a utility rate study in fairness right now. If you take that $500,000 that we essentially gifted to 5,000 people, 3,400 of which are county residents, not your citizens inside the city of Bonnie Lake, 1,600 are in the city of Bonnie Lake. So less than 10% of your billable customers in Bonnie Lake have been affected. If you take that 500,000 and now you're going to spread it across all 16,000 customers we have, that does not seem fair at all. And so Kathleen has said this would be unreasonable to not bill these folks. We have worked through a process. Um, I'm gonna audit the work. They are going to put a line on the bill. We're gonna put a blurb on the website as well as a blurb on the bills. Um, it will come through as a summer rate under payment or under billing type of a line item. So it'll be a separate line item. Our code states what we are supposed to bill. So if you're saying that, um, the shelf said $5, but the cash register says $6, you're gonna be charged, you know, what the person states. Our code says we should be charging these summer rates.
Right, again, but I understand, you know, that's all fine, but, uh, you know, clearly a technical mistake or a procedural mistake by the city there, um, that, that's, that's an issue. So we do not, on a regular basis, go out there and try to recover costs for errors. Um, we have multiple instances where we have given and forgiven and just looked over many issues of thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars and just said, "Okay, well, we're just gonna forget it. We'll just write it off."
Which, uh, I, in my. Ms. Ryerson, hold. Uh, in, in my response to that, Councilmember Swatman, is that my original intent was to forgive the money that you're, that you're referring to. And after I've got multiple emails from our, um, chief financial officer and with the, um, advice of our, uh, city attorney at the time, I did not want to go against our, uh, code or the law. So that's why we have adopted the, um, procedure that we have right now. But I can, I can tell you that I'm in agreement with you as far as, um, attempting or wanting to legally, uh, forgive what, uh, what was, um, our mistake. So, uh, we're still looking at it.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Carter?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Carter?
Well, I, I would let Sherry.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, my, my biggest thing is, um, no, I'm sorry. Um, my biggest thing is I don't see how it's fair to bill 11,000 other customers for this mistake.
Well, you wouldn't.
No matter how you look at it, you, you would. We have to have the revenue.
No, you, you're not, because that's what the fundamental problem is with the water rates. You know, think about it, folks. $500,000 in lost revenue is what we're talking about in the summer, right? That's because the water was that much more expensive in the summer? That the water that we purchased in the summer is that much more expensive than it is in the winter? That's what we're talking about. We're talking about a rate surcharge in the winter. We're not talking about people that got free water. We're talking about a surcharge that exists in the summer that was not charged for, right? And, you know, see what the fundamental problem is? That's my contention, but, you know, I'm, I'm an odd duck.
Divided by 5,000.
It didn't cost, it did not cost the city anymore. They, it was the same.
But it's revenue that's calculated into the rate study. So if we don't receive the money, we have to get the money another way.
Well, I know, but that's, you know, not accurate.
Okay, well, let's.
So I think, and I'm not trying to call anybody out or anything, but I think it is an appropriate place to ask the question and have it explained, what was the issue? And I know that some checks and balances have already been put in place, so this hasn't happened again. But maybe if we could just talk about that for a second, so that there's an understanding to the public as to what occurred?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, Christie typically goes in every, uh, right before January to update the rates. Council put a freeze on the water rates, and so when Christie didn't have to go in and update rates, she didn't realize that she.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ryerson, who, what is Christie's position? What, what is her?
Utility billing. She's the accounting specialist for utility billing.
Okay.
And she didn't realize that she needed to update the rates for the summer at the same time, since we didn't increase any rates. We've always increased rates. It was an error on her part. She's apologized profusely. Um, rates will now be double-checked over by the customer service manager staff, um, before they're set to go forward, so that we don't have any of this mishap ever again.
Sure, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Evans?
Uh, Councilmember Swatman said that, uh, in your scenario, someone walked in, purchased something, and then we're trying to collect from it. However, the advertised price is what we're trying to collect for, is that correct?
No.
No?
Absolutely not. The bill that they got, the actual bill the consumer got.
Not the bill that they got. What does it say that they should be paying?
The bill they got, right, the receipt.
Right.
They got, said, by the way, it even said on it, "Summer rates in effect."
I still have to pay that. Is that correct? If for some reason their bill came out and they missed my escrow payment, if they missed calculating that in and then I paid what was there.
That's the actual cost. Where you're completely overlooking the point that it doesn't cost the city anymore. They received the product, they didn't receive any less or more of the product. The cost is the same. The city doesn't pay extra money for summer water than it does for winter water.
Did we turn on the Tacoma water?
Tacoma, Tacoma water runs, surprise, 24/7/365.
That's not correct.
That is correct.
The TPU water that we purchased from Tacoma Public Utilities does not run 24/7.
Yeah, it does.
From the city of.
It does, Ryan, and I got that information from you guys. I still have that information. There was a reason I actually received that information.
Councilmember Swatman, I can tell you for a fact, we do not use TPU water 24/7. That is incorrect.
I'm gonna raise a point of order, Councilmember Swatman.
But it actually does.
Now, now, no.
I'm sure.
We, this, this discussion, we need to move on.
That's fine.
So far, I, we do have your point on record, uh, Councilmember Swatman. It is time to move on at this point. If, with your differences that you have with our, uh, public service director and our chief financial officer, we can discuss that at a, at a different time, but it is time to move on. All right. Do we have any more open discussion? Okay, let's, uh, move on to our, our review of council minutes. Councilmember Watson?
We had five corrections that have been submitted.
Okay. Now we have a discussion on AB 22106 on the Murray's Disposal Agreement. Mr. Vodipich, I, uh, turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, let's talk about solid waste. So, uh, since 2004, uh, DM Disposal, now Murray's Disposal, has been providing solid waste collection and disposal services in the city. That contract is due to expire the end of this year, December 1st, December 31st, excuse me. I'm working with DM Dis, or excuse me, Murray's, Josh is laughing. Uh, I'm working with Murray's Disposal. We came up with a proposed contract amendment that would extend, uh, the current contract for 10 years and provide for a three-year extension. And Josh Metcalf, uh, from Murray's Disposal is in the audience tonight if you have any questions. It did go forward to the Finance Committee and the Finance Committee forwarded it to tonight for, uh, open council discussion.
Okay, do we have any questions? Any discussion on the matter?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Watson?
I had mentioned Finance, that they've been very helpful in any issues in the city. I've had other people have, you know, problems, wheels being broken off, they take care of them. And, uh, they're very helpful for whatever things they have going on in the city, too. So they answer any question if we have any problems. So I, I support them being approved for this contract.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Watson. Any further discussion or, um, on the matter? Okay, so, uh, my understanding is that this is, uh, for me to sign, uh, to sign the agreement, is that?
I, I was gonna ask if we went on next week's consent agenda?
That, uh.
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, any further vote on that?
Okay. Right. On next week's consent agenda.
All right, next we have AB 22112 on the PTO plan contract. Mr. Sullivan?
So this is a, been a long, uh, time coming. So just for some background, um, early this year, uh, back in February, uh, the city council passed Resolution 3009, uh, directing staff to add, do a, basically to do a Parks Trails and Open Space Plan to the Planning Commission Work Plan. Um, we then came back a couple times in May with the draft RFP, um, to kind of show council what would be in the proposal that we would submit to the consultants. Um, on May 24th, 2022, the city council posted the motion directing staff to issue the request for proposals and select the consultant team for the new, uh, the new parks plan. Um, I want to point out that this would be the first time that we are doing a comprehensive parks plan since 20, since 2008. So it's been 14 years since we've looked at parks in a kind of comprehensive manner. Um, we have done, um, kind of hiv-hodge, look at issues, but we haven't looked at how the park system as a whole, as an integrated system, works together, um, which has led to some of inefficiencies in our park system. Um, we did receive a number of bids. Um, also, when we came on May 24th, we were saying that the estimated cost was gonna be around $450,000. That was kind of our, as a, one of my old directors used to say, our Kentucky windage number. When we actually got the, the bid proposals in, um, it came in to about $225,000 for the, the selected, the selected team. Uh, the team is made up of, uh, a conservation tech, which is a lead who's wrote parks plans for many jurisdictions here in the cit, in the state of Washington. Uh, in addition to them, there's a landscaping, architectural landscaping firm that does nothing but parks, uh, and also a, a public relations firm, so, because we want to make sure that the public understands what we're doing in this plan. And then also a number of the people have worked in city government in parks, so they understand not just parks, but also city, how city government operates with parks. Um, as we were negotiating the scope of work and the contract, um, council on September 17th, the scope of work and the contract, council on September 6 had a discussion regarding Allen York Park and the need to kind of front-load some additional work for Allen York Park and take a deeper dive into some operational and security issues. Instead of doing another RFP and doing another contract and also having that delay to do that, we went back to our consultants and said, could you add this additional scope into your work and also front-load it? And so they agreed. We added that to the scope to basically do the work that was discussed at council on September 6. That was also stuff by Chief Jeter to look at how we are going to control access, operation, what is the appropriate number of parking for boat stalls or boat trailer stalls, vehicle parking, what's the best way to access this? They're going to come up with three different kind of very high-level approaches, bring those back to council, have those vetted, and then come back with a final conceptual design that relies on kind of work we've already done, but addresses those operational issues that council's wanting to look at. So that was added into it, which brought the cost up to the $290,000. The importance for this project is that this will be the first time that we're actually looking at not only what we want to put into parks, but also how they're going to be designed and the actual cost. The current kind of cost that's in the comprehensive plan is a big broad average of it on average costs X per square foot to build a community park. We'll be able to get much better cost by identifying what improvements we want, where we want those improvements to be. And it also front-loads the Allen York Park safety stuff to get done this quarter and into early quarter of 2023. So before the next boating season, we'll have a plan. How much we can get implemented, it's going to take time because there's funding aspects, but the council will have a plan. We do have money in the Parks Plan, in the Park Fund to cover the entire cost. The 2023 CIP for the Parks Plan includes $450,000 for this effort. So we're way under that budget effort. The reason that we put in the Midtown Park stuff for this year was because that was in the budget for this year. We had $125,000 authorized this year to work at kind of a master plan for Midtown Park, which we decided not to do. So in order to meet the council's objective of getting the Allen York Park stuff moved forward, we wanted to enter into the contract this year, knowing that we won't spend $125,000 in 90 days, and that the bulk of the cost would be in '23, '24, where there is $450,000 already in the budget to cover the PTO plan, and it would still leave us with a $2.6 million ending fund balance. If the council wants to continue to move forward with parks, charging park impact fees and constructing parks, receiving RCO grants for parks, we need to do this plan. Without this plan, we don't have an RCO certified plan, so we can't get grants. We won't be, so that will impact us. We won't have accurate planning to do park impact fees, which is another, removing another funding source. So this is the base document to move forward, all those. And one benefit is your decision card tonight has a $30,000 Y item in there for kind of an operational study. That decision card goes completely away. We've actually worked with chief to make sure that this scope of work adjusts chief's concerns, our parks' operation and maintenance concerns. So everybody's on the same page, and we're rowing in the same direction on the same contract. I'm not going to answer any questions.
Ms. Sullivan, has this been put through committee yet?
It has been through committee two or three times. It's been through council two or three times, and it's been through the Planning Commission and Park Commission.
So we should put this on the which agenda after this? So go ahead. Councilmember McLemone?
Yeah, so I think Jason's done a good job, and this kind of scratches a lot of the topics that we had to address, and it's good. I just would encourage the council members to recognize that we're going to spend $90,000 on community engagement. So let's see if we get $90,000 worth of value out of it. That's a lot of tax dollars. Or, yeah, I don't know. That, to me, kind of like, is, I get it. But also, the labor, the most expensive labor rate is for community engagement. So for me, I just look at that and go, I hope we get that value to the citizens, right?
Oh, that is.
And it's not just a Facebook post with some Twitter follow-ups, right? Because I can do that.
Well, I can hopefully answer that question, at least when it comes to value. Some of the things that we're doing different on this, because Parks touches on so many different aspects of life, we're not just going to do Facebook posts and Twitter posts. That's part of it, because people get information from social media. But part of this is also having the consultant team and the planners showing up at at least two tunes for taps to engage with the public, add the tunes of taps, and try to get their input that way. We're also forming a stakeholder committee that will be kind of the guiding force behind this. That stakeholder committee, the way it was laid out in the RFP, and we're just going to move forward with it, because that's the way council approved the RFP, is made up of a member from the Planning Commission, Parks Commission, Arts Commission, a city council member, and a representative appointed by the mayor, and a representative appointed by the city council. So two public people at large, plus the commission members, plus the city council member. So that as this moves forward, all those little different, I shouldn't say little, but all those different entities that have kind of involvement in it are able to move forward. So if like, people, someone wanted to appoint, the council could appoint someone from Bonnie Lake Little League, for example, because I just got an email from them, so that's the one that's the top of my mind, to serve on the committee to have that in. So I guess that's what I'm trying to say is, we expanded how we're doing this, because it touches on so many different aspects of life in Bonnie Lake, that we wanted to cast the most broadest net that we could and have a committee of citizens that are driving the process versus a committee of staff that are driving this process. So we're, that's kind of where that cost is coming from, to staff up those stakeholder committees, because that's just going to take time and resources to have those meetings, prepare the materials. But I think at the end, you'll get a better result, because you'll have something that's been vetted, and a council member sitting there at the table the whole time. So when we get back to council, at least it won't be, why did we do this? Why would that? There's a, so that's a caveat. You'll have to pick the member from the council that you want to sit on the committee. And we'll be doing the same with each of the commissions, and then we'll work with the mayor's office to find out who from the public they want to select, and also how the council wants to do that public representation.
Well, it sounds very well planned, Ms. Sullivan. What type of timeframe are we looking at here?
The goal is to have it completed by the end of next year, which is why I asked Councilmember Carter to, or Deputy Mayor Carter, to put it on right now, so that we wouldn't miss that deadline. The Allen York Park stuff is being advanced, so that we'll have that done hopefully late first quarter, early second quarter of next year, so that we can have some at least discussions with council going into the boating season. And if the decision card for the boat trailer parking is approved, that would just fold in as a built-in type thing.
Okay. Councilmember Evans? Oh, Councilmember Evans?
Jason, when was the last time we did the park impact fee study? Was that in the comp plan?
The last time, I think we did a rate study, as far back as I can find, had to have been '08 or '06.
Okay. And you know what that rate study suggested for park impact?
I've never been able to find it.
Okay. Do you know what our comprehensive plan says a single-family park impact fee should be?
A couple, like $10,000 or $15,000. But that was based on, because when we did the comp plan update, in order to keep our park impact fee at least kind of somewhat on the side of the line that it needed to stay on, we found some general estimates of what nationally, nationwide, it costs to build an average foot of a community park. And that's what we used, and then divided it over the number of growth. So that number could shift, because one of the second things that's here is doing that rate study. And so that, this is important, because the way, I kind of tried to explain this the way to the council, to the committee, is typically the way that this works is you do your plan, then you do the rate study, and they don't always line up. So in this case, what we're doing, and the way we've negotiated and talked with the consultant team, is they're going to get everything kind of to a point where this is kind of, for lack of a better word, the wish list of everything we want. We're going to pause, bring in the rate study analysis, let them complete the financial analysis. So at that point, we'll know, and we can get early buy-in from council, where the park impact fee needs to be set, what's the maximum rate that we can charge, do that financial analysis, and then back-feed that into the plan, so that at the end of the day, the rate analysis and the plan are financially supportive of each other, and the plan that comes out in the end, we can say is financially doable. Because we'll be able to make those changes midstream.
And what are we currently charging for park impact fees?
I would say it's around $4,000 to $4,500 per.
Okay. I have last year's numbers, it was $4,400.
Yeah, so it's gone up by inflation. Last year's CPI, so probably 47.
Do you know how we came to that number? That was pre-me on a council.
It was also pre-me. When I came here, there was a rate that was already established, and we have just been inflating it by CPI ever since. I've been trying to find the rate study from back when the park impact fee was established, and I could never, I've never been able to get my hands on it.
You know, I mean, you know, me and parks and financing, I just want to make sure, what I want to find out is the history on it. If our comp plan says we should be charging 10.7, and you're saying that's based on a nationwide average potentially?
Yeah, that could be way off in orders of magnitude.
Yeah. And we're charging 4,700. That's roughly 47% of what we anticipated. If the 10 was presented to the council, I mean, Dan's probably the only one that might know, and that was negotiated down. I don't know how we got to that. I just want to make sure we're not spinning our wheels and we come back and go.
That's what we're trying.
And the study says 12,000. And then we go, that's way too much.
And that is.
$400.
So that's why, and that's why we set this up, the contract the way we did, and why we're bringing both tonight. So when we get to that point where we know Midtown Park's going to have X, Allen York Park's going to have Y, we'll get a cost estimate.
And that's more for me sharing with the council. If we're moving forward with this, let's keep in mind that what is going to be presented is a realistic.
Yes.
Number. And us downsizing that, like a water rate increase like we typically do, ultimately does not end up funding the entire project long-term.
Or you change the project. And that's why we're doing it midstream.
Okay.
The council has that flexibility. So if we come in with our plan that says it's $12,000 for whatever, and the council says, no, we only want to do 7,000. Well, that sets our maximum count, and then we feed back into the park plan.
Okay.
And start making those hard decisions of what gets cut, so that the park impact fee that you're actually charging, plus other, you know, funding sources, meets the bottom line. And that's what I'm saying. And typically, in the past, you get into that problem, because you do the plan, everybody gets excited for it.
Yeah.
And then once it's approved, they go hire the consultant to do the impact fee analysis. And they go like this. So we're trying to, we're trying to short-circuit that exact issue.
And if this was last done in 2008, and the estimate was 10,000, and again, that's kind of a number pulled out of air, the inventory from 2008 to 2022, I would say a majority of what was estimated then is probably used. We're dealing now with much less inventory on a.
Buildable homes.
Buildable homes, yeah.
Yeah.
So what we've been underfunding, potentially is underfunded 80%, 80% of our inventory to offset that is gone. So.
Possibly.
Possibly. And your funding source for this, or what you're putting forward as far as available inventory, what is the accuracy on that of truly buildable versus just a dude with five acres that may be able to do it?
When we do buildable lands, I think we pull out, I want to say, 35% to 40% of things that may redevelop.
Okay.
So we're only, we're, there's a mark, and we actually, it's not the bare minimum. You have to have like two and a half times the minimum to be even considered redevelopable. And then we pull a market factor out of about 40%.
Okay.
So it doesn't assume 100% of what's there.
Okay.
It assumes half.
Because I'd hate to be basing it on this and know that none of, half of that wouldn't even come to fruition.
Yeah.
You know, no one's going to build on this hillside or whatever, but it's developed.
No, we pull out critical areas, too. So when we do, when we do the buildable lands, we, first, we find all the acreage that is redevelopable, which has to be at least two and a half times. Then we subtract out critical areas. We subtract out a percentage for roads and stormwater, and that gives you a certain acreage. And then you cut that in half by 40%.
Okay.
So you're really on the, at least at the city level, I think at the county, it could get a little crazy, but because our data sources are better, we're getting down to over, less than 50% of the, kind of that gross is left to be what we're actually counting for on homes.
Thank you.
So, oh, Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, how long is this particular study going to take? And is it going to affect the plans of like Ballpark Four turning into parking and that parking lot being repaved for boat launch parking as well? Because I don't want to have to go through another summer of no boat launch parking.
It will actually support that effort. Because one of the things that they're going to be looking at is, because we've already explained to them that we want to convert ball field to parking, what are they going to be looking into is the environmental impacts that that would, that would come with that, and what we would need to do to mitigate it. So it actually supports those efforts. And as I said, we front-loaded this, so that we're working in tandem with the ball field for conversion, if it's approved, if that decision card is approved. So if that decision card goes forward, it's going to be baked into the analysis. And when they're doing like their conceptual plans, their environmental, like, here's the wetlands, here's the things you have to be avoiding, they're going to be supporting that effort. So we're going to be advancing the ball further down than if we didn't do the plan. And it's, the whole plan's scheduled to be done by the end of next year. But like I said, the Allen York Park stuff has been front-loaded for Q, late Q1, early Q2, so before the boating season. So that it supports the efforts Ryan and the public work side is doing to get the ball field four paved. It's not supposed to challenge it. It complements and advances that objective.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Councilmember Evans?
I know at one point, we talked about adding a, the BNO taxes, you know, that's kind of been tabled. But that would help also reduce the park impact fee over time if that, if we establish that we need X. And if the park impact fee is the only thing covering X, if we also had a revenue source of a BNO tax, what about a potential third revenue source of an industrial park impact fee?
That is included in the rate study to look at that.
It is. Okay, that's an option.
Yeah. So when we brought back, when we bring back the.
He's got a plan.
When we bring back the rate study, the questions of the BNO tax, I think, become just a natural discussion for the council. I'm not advocating one way or the other. But you'll see what the total cost is. You'll see what the park impact fees are. And it will enlighten that conversation, because you'll have an actual list of projects and an actual list of cost.
As a third option, an industrial, not a BNO tax, but an industrial.
That, the park impact fee to pick up both residential and commercial is built into the rates, into the rate, the PIF rate study, which is part of the second contract.
Okay.
So we'll come back with numbers for both of those. Based on that, you'll know what your delta is. And then you, the council has the option at that time to go, no, we don't want to change the plan, so we're going to do X, or we're going to lower the rates and do Y. We can have all that conversations with FCS Group when we get to that point. But we'll know, we'll know three things. We'll know some variables that we don't know now. One, actual cost to do it, what the actual rates need to be and what they are going to be, and this commercial rate, which we've never had, what that will be, I don't know. That will give you a total sum. We'll have a project cost, and then you can figure out, and then we'll know what the delta is. And we can play with that analysis at that point. That can be done before we complete the plan, so you know when you adopt the plan. Here are all the funding sources. And it's important to note that we're also going to look at maintenance cost. So that's not a surprise. So we're also going to look at, here's what we want to build, here's what it's going to maintain, and we're going to give it to you in both equipment cost and hours.
Is that potential revenue bondable?
I do not know if park impact fees are bondable. I'd have to defer to the Chief Financial Officer.
That is a very good question.
I, oh. Oh, sorry. I thought you wanted my answer.
She has.
I always want your answer.
I actually don't have the answer to that. Sorry. All of a sudden, I can't. I can't breathe. You choked me up. I can look into that for you, though.
Well, my question, Mr. Sullivan, is what is our next step?
What is?
Oh, Councilmember Swatman, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, Jason did an outstanding job putting this all together. You know, this is at CDC also. We wanted to move this down to the workshop, so that full council had a pretty good view on this before it moved forward, so we didn't get stuck on any particular questions on it. You know, and I really liked the thing that they had the rate study kind of intermingled in there, so that we can do the iterative process. You know, that was really a good, good idea with that one. And there's a component of it that's that public safety kind of Allen York organization, operational kind of component that's going to be sooner than later type of a thing, right? So hopefully, and I wanted to make sure, though, that we get, you know, the public safety folks involved in that process, right? That this isn't an external process. You know, we need to have a lot of input from the stakeholders, being like the chief, our local folks, right?
Yeah, so we showed the contract scope of work to Chief Jeter. He had a. Yeah. So we, we showed the contract scope of work to Chief Cheater. He had a couple of comments. We've added that back on and to make sure it was crystal clear that city staff included the Bonny Lake Police Department. We specifically said, and consultation with the Bonny Lake Police Department.
Very good. Yeah.
So it's spelled out in the scope of work that they have to consult with the police department.
So in reference to any public safety issues over there, hopefully we'll make sure to get, you know, the, those folks actually involved in that. Because, you know, I, I hate to have us go out there and have recommendations by an external party that isn't, you know. Doesn't have input or actual conversation with our local folks. They could, you know.
Chief will be on the, chief will be part of the staff stakeholder group. That will be looking at the recommendations because we're going to be looking at things like what's the capacity for the beach area.
Sure. Yeah.
And all of the police departments pass kind of expert, not expertise, but experience, well, expertise, but and experience with that area. Will feed right into that. And there'll be staff interviews with both operations staff and PD to, to get that baseline information.
Very good.
Swat pitch, could we make this part of an issue for our next director's meeting that we can talk about?
And the, um, what it also had, you know, and I would agree with Councilmember McLeimans that, you know, that. Oh, I guess the contract is the contract for the amount of hours basically, but you know, the public say, the public input component of it kind of worries me a little bit just because it's so large. It seems, I know, I, again, you did a great job with it. Really appreciate all your work putting this together, but. You know, I look around the room at council members and we have a plan for, you know, example, the WSU park. And there is multiple plans for it actually that exist today and some pretty decent. Plans, probably the mayor's seen some of them that are, you know, laid out. So. You know, how, how does that kind of stuff correspond with, you know, because my understanding is this plan wouldn't be available. You know, the, for two thousand twenty three before we're going to put the green check mark by it. You know, what am I doing with WSU in between now and two thousand twenty four?
If there's, if, as we build the plan, if there's a great project that's kind of at the forefront, I guess the council could always amend the CIP to add the project at that time. We're not saying we have to wait till the plan's completely done to make those decisions. The, the fact that we do have so many good things is what actually lowered the price on some of the other things, which makes the public component seem larger. Because we have all this background documentation that we're able to provide that isn't having to be created. So. It, it's kind of a balancing sword. I would say that right now in the decision cards, in the approved CIP that's coming to city council, there isn't anything planned for Midtown Park in two thousand twenty three. So we wouldn't be stopping a project that was proposed. We wouldn't be impacting the projects proposed. If something were to come up in the middle of the next year and at the plan, you know, when we first started talking, you know, Q two of next year, oh, that's a great idea. Let's move it forward. The council can always give us that direction and we can add that to the CIP. But at least this way, we're going to get the public's engagement because I've heard everything from Midtown Park needing to stay. Completely as it is, as a nature preserve in the middle of city to sports fields, to disc golf course, to running trails. So. Lots of people have lots of minds and images about that park. So I think coming together as a stakeholder group to answer. Those questions and come up with a plan that all of the people support, I think will help move that plan forward because I think there'll be more. Community buy-in and community investment into it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate all your work on that. That's really great stuff. You know, from the other side of the house, it's kind of like me looking at it for over the decades. I'm like, yeah, that's a gigantic cop out to me because, you know, not, not. In reference to you doing anything bad work over there, it's that the councils and councils have failed to do their, their jobs. Over the periods of years and pushing, pushing things over the finish line because we get hung up every time we turn around on trying to get things done in the public space that. But, you know.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Swatman. Uh, one of the things that I want to do is excise the record of Mr. Sullivan mentioning the term disc golf. We don't, I want that to never exist.
There was a decent proposal for that.
Waiting for us to approve that. We've talked about for over years. And so I've closed down. So yes, I would love to have a disc golf course or someplace.
Actually, actually me too. It's just that being a golfer and disc golf, just it's kind of.
A lot of local people like have disc golf courses.
Like road bikers and mountain bikers. They don't get along.
Okay. Any further, uh, discussion or questions or anything? All right. Before we move on, I think I'll be remiss in mentioning that if Councilmember Evans is calling himself a preemie, that the only person who is not a preemie in this room is Councilmember Swatman. Who's been here for what, twenty years?
No, no, I don't think so. Every day is a new day.
Okay, we're going to go one up on the number. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan.
Is this moving to consent agenda for next week or regular council items?
That was, yeah, I was asking what our next step was.
Yeah.
If, if there's nobody opposed to it, I would put on consent. If there's anybody opposed, it would go to, you know, I don't see any hands being raised. So let's put on consent.
Okay. All right. Uh, now we move on to AB twenty two, uh, one, one, three, the park impact fee update. Ms. Sullivan, again.
So this is kind of a, kind of anti, I guess, comment catcher. We're talking about it for so long. This is just the contract with FCS group, FCS group to do the park impact fee rate study. It's fully funded out of, uh, the money already in the planning services line item. There is enough balances, even with all the encumbrances to cover the full cost. And that's what we just wanted to move them forward at the same time so that we can work in conjunction.
Okay. It's just another.
So to consent.
Consent agenda for next week?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, let's move on to AB twenty two, one, one, five on the public testimony from Peak Four Ten Business Park, um, DA Public Hearing. Ms. Sullivan, once again.
Um, so we had the public hearing for the Peak Four Ten Development Agreement last week. Um, we did receive a number of written comments. In addition to the, about four, uh, comments that were made in person. In order to speed up the discussion, because I know we have lots of other things on the agenda tonight. We did prepare a comment matrix, which is standard for us, where we went through the entire. All of the comments and provided responses to every one of the comments. We thought instead of walking through that, we would turn it over to the council. If there was one question or response that we, we need to enlighten. Or provide more detail or explain how we got to our conclusion, uh, we will. The next steps would be depending on the outcome of tonight's meeting. This would move forward to the city council meeting next week, um, along with the purchase and sales agreement.
Okay.
For the council to authorize the mayor to sign both the development agreement and the PSA for the property.
How, how was that matrix communicated back to the people who actually made the comments?
When, uh, since we're in the middle of discussion, I didn't, it will go back to when we issue all the decisions, all of the comment matrices will go back to them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
In addition to being in the packet, we just don't send them out because if the council wants me to, it's week one. I wanted to get that input before I sent it, it out as kind of the final version.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Okay. Oh, uh, Councilmember Swatman.
Yeah, it's kind of a technical question, if you will. I'm trying to wonder the wording on the actual proposed development agreement. For the mayor's signature, which is an interesting area, right? I've never seen that type of wording before where it says that by the direction of, of the Bonny Lake City Council.
Are you looking at the resolution or?
The actual.
Can you give me a page number?
Yeah, page ninety eight on my book. It's the very, it's the signature line, basically of the development agreement. Right? And I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a particular reason that the mayor is trying to use that terminology as opposed to the normal. Like Mr. Sullivan just stated, authorized by the city council.
We can tweak that. That's just.
Because, you know.
It's, it's intended to mean the same thing, which is the, the mayor is only signing this.
Sure.
Contract, uh, because the council authorized. We could, we could change that. As authorized by the Bonny Lake City Council.
If the mayor would accept that, I think that would be great because I don't like it when the legislature directs the executive. I think there's a, you know. Fence that we need to stay on each other's sides.
Well, I do understand that, uh, Councilmember, uh, Swatman. What page?
Uh, page ninety eight of the packet.
Ninety eight. Okay. Let me, uh, let me look at that.
Right here, sir. It's. By direction of the Bonny Lake Council.
Okay.
And we were meaning direction in the same way as authorization.
Oh, no, I understand. So. Uh, I will fully consider that before I sign the document, uh, Councilmember Swatman.
Mayor, are you okay if we just change it from by the direction to as authorized by the city, by Lake City Council?
Sounds perfectly fine to me.
Okay. So we'll, we'll make that in the.
Thank you.
Final version as it comes back to the city council.
Okay, uh, Councilmember McLeimans, I believe you had your hand in it.
Yeah, I think it's comment thirteen. I'm trying to find it again. For sixteen. What was the response to sixteen?
You know what page you're on?
I'm on page, uh, one thirty nine. The very bottom of one thirty nine.
Uh, page sixteen. So if you go to the comment matrix. On page.
One twenty five.
Yeah, one twenty. Thank you, Councilmember Evans.
Developer is not required to mitigate existing flooding issues. Developer is required to install stormwater facilities and mitigate the impacts caused by the proposed development. Existing flooding problems are not as a result of a proposed Peak Four Ten Business Park, but from previous development projects. See response to comment number nine.
Yeah. So if you, if you, if you go back to comment number nine. The driveway that's in question is located in the middle of a floodplain, in the middle of a wetland. Those areas naturally flood and naturally have water impounded in them. The driveway in question, the culvert in question and culverts in question are all out in unincorporated Pierce County. We have requested that Mrs. Kontos contact the county.
That was my question.
Regarding this culvert issue, um, because the culvert, the stream, the driveway are all not within the city. So I can't. I can't, we don't, we don't, we can't come up with a public works project to go fix a county issue. Um, and as I said, the driveway, if you look at page. We did some investigation, kind of try to explain this to the council. Um, if you look at page, uh, one thirty. Um, it shows, I have a kind of a dot point where the driveway and the culvert are. And then where the property is and the big kind of blue area is a wetland and was in originally inventoried in nineteen eighty eight. So the wetland that's been there has been there for thirty four years, not forty four years. We figured that out. I have to fix that in the comment matrix. My math was off. And then if you look at the next page, one thirty one. There is a, a regulated floodplain. Also right where that culvert is. So we would, just based on the geo, the natural occurring geological features, we would expect to have flooding in that area.
Does the county regulate that?
Yes, the, the floodplain, the wetland. So if the culvert needed to be upsided or enlarged, it's, it's actually a culvert for Fennel Creek. They would need, we've, that's why we've encouraged her to work with the county because there's not anything we can do for those existing problems. The Peak Four Ten Development will be building three large stormwater ponds. That will mitigate, that will basically impound the water on the site and release it at the rate that the water currently comes off the site. The site has to be modeled basically as a till forest. So till forests are the things that absorb the water the most. So if you think about. You go out into a forest, you don't see a bunch of water running off normally because it goes into the dirt and is absorbed. So they have to model their efforts, even though it's part of its graded, part of it's already developed. They have to model it as a hundred percent forest and then they have to build the detention facilities to. Make sure that the water would leave at the same rate as a till forest. The, also the challenge is there's too old. They're not stormwater ponds. They were temporary erosion consentment control ponds that were put in. When Compass Point decided to grade the property twenty three years ago, and they were never meant to be stormwater ponds. They don't have flow control on them, I believe. They just kind of discharged the water. And so what happens now is those things fill up and they just release all their water. And that's not what they were meant to be there for. And they just, that's a legacy of an old project. So we're actually going to be removing those ponds and on the compass points, I shouldn't say we, the developer will be removing those ponds and then building two new. Stormwater ponds on the site that all that stormwater that currently goes to those ponds will go to, plus any stormwater created. They're also maintaining the large wetland on site except for like six thousand square feet, um, which is like. Three percent, four percent of the whole wetland area. And then we need to, that part gets impacted so we can put the road through. And then they're mitigating that by creating twice as much wetland as they, they.
Has there been any adverse effects because of, um, that stormwater or what is not the stormwater?
I think that's where a lot of the current concerns, Mrs. Kontos' concerns come from.
Okay.
If you read through the letter as a whole, she really talks about these stormwater ponds on the Compass Point site. And they're not stormwater ponds. Like I said, they were temporary, did holding ponds that were created when they mass graded the site. Twenty, that's gotta be more than that, probably twenty five years ago. That then the development fell apart, but those temporary ponds were still there, just kind of. Doing their things without any sort of flow control. So I think. Until we see the development and we see it all modeled out in the TR to know for sure, but my gut tells me that we will see. Some sort of change because those ponds won't be releasing uncontrollably into the creek like they are now.
Okay. Is that?
Yeah, my head hurts, but that's.
I'm with the council.
It's a complicated, it's a very complicated.
It is. And that's what struck me by that input in the letter and my understanding of it is that. The project is on the other side of the street. And dealing with a, a lot of changes and it's. Can potentially drive changes all the way back into that. And from the satellite view, from my, I, I know I'm just a simple, simpleton when it comes to all this. But from the satellite view, it looked like, um, you know, we have the potential, if we goof it up to, to wash a lot of that out, right? But yet the city just built this huge, just up the road from them, right, on their side of the street. So if I, if I were those people, I'd be super concerned about more work, right? Because. Is it downhill? I mean, is all this stuff downhill?
So what it is, is the, the culvert she's talking about is Fennel Creek. So Fennel Creek basically necks down. Uh, into her culvert because when the county let Mountain View subdivision go in, they probably, it looks like they undersized the culvert. And so.
They do.
Which happens. Um, and so that's why when we do our study, we have to make sure, and that's why there's. A TIR that's specifically going to be reviewed as part of this. TR stands for technical information report. It's all the.
Thank you.
Calculations about here's how much the impervious to surface is, this is how much water is going to come off. This is how big the pond needs to be. This is what the current rate would be. This is how big the flow control structure has to be. That's the study that's critical to make sure that when we're discharging to the natural discharge point, which is Fennel Creek. That we're discharging at a rate that doesn't overwhelm the stream. And that's where the technical information report comes in. That's, you know, it's going to be a book like this. That talks about here's how much impervious surface is being added. Here's much the water runoff from that. Here's what would happen in a till forest condition. Therefore, your pond needs to be this big. The control structure needs to be this big and this is the rate of release to maintain the flow regime within Fennel Creek.
Now, it's, it sounds like that, um. Regarding goof ups, the fact that you and Mr. Lear have actually addressed these. Concerns in that you will be looking at the goof up and, and trying to fix it. Is that correct, Mr. Lear?
Best answer of the night.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, mo- most of the water issues are flowing in the county. And creating the problem and the culverts on ninety six. The roadside ditch at ninety six, that's our all county. Problems. So we sympathize, but it's. And I believe in a technical information report, they have to do a half streamed, a half mile downstream analysis. That's what I was asking. So it's a half mile. So from the site and a half mile down Fennel Creek, they have to look at what the hydrology and the flow regime is and model that. So. Within, you know, a couple hundred feet of her site, we'll be seeing what the. Stream will be doing based on the modeling effort in the, in the reports that Barkhausen will be doing.
Has Ms. Kontos been contacted?
I have, I have spoken to Mrs. Kontos many times at the front counter and explained similar answers.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
The, once the council's okay with everything, this comment matrix will be given to Ms. Kontos.
Okay. Well, that is, that sounds like very good news. Um, do we have any, oh, Councilmember Swatman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so from a risk perspective, how does it work here? Because that's what I was looking at with. You know, we're obviously going to transfer the ownership of the property from the citizens of Bonny Lake into private developers. It's my understanding is the proposal. Right? So the scenario that, you know, having to play the long game, looking down the street, I'm like, this poor developer gets into it and says, this, this is untenable, I can't do this, this does not work. So I'm out. And I guess, and then as long as we're happy with that, it's like, it's, well, property's transferred ownership.
Yeah. And the way this is currently laid out is knowing that there's all these moving parts is all of the infrastructure, to include the stormwater facilities, are constructed in the first two years, by twenty twenty-four.
Sure.
So I don't think Chris would do this.
Because that's got to support the development.
Right.
Obviously, those are the important things that be done first, right? Because you don't want to build a, a building and then build the stormwater.
Right. But he's not just building the stormwater for the one building.
For the whole.
The whole site.
Yeah.
So.
And the sewer.
And the sewer.
And the water.
And the road, and the water. So after twenty twenty-four, if Chris decides to not move forward the project, all of the public utility infrastructure that would be needed to handle water, sewer, storm, that's all there. So the building site's going to remain vacant for years.
Let's play a game, right? And let's move back a couple of inches? And it's like, you know, I, I've had to finance all of this development, all of these roads and this stuff like this, right? I had to, you know, do that. What if I decide I don't want to do that?
Then, I mean.
I'm just.
Isn't this the same risk we talked about a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah.
In the same project.
Yeah.
Councilmember Swatman is really concerned you're going to, you're going to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you know, and nobody disagrees with that, because everybody loves what you do and then loves what you've done out there, right?
I a hundred percent agree with you. What you're saying is important.
Right.
And just telling you that. Have considered. Going to be moving.
Right. But, but remember, you know, that I'm the, I'm the turtle and you're the scorpion, right? You know? And there, there's a, there's a little parable there, if people understand how that works. And it's just the way it's supposed to work. It is the way it has to work. Because, you know, you, you don't like, you, the, the business has to make money to exist, right? It's kind of the American way. You, you do contribute a huge amount to the city, and, and we appreciate all that stuff. But ultimately, you know, you've got to have a project that makes sense.
That is very valuable point. For the reason.
Yeah, exactly right.
If you look at the Compass Point site alone.
Right.
It's, and I went over this with Mayor Johnson. It is an undeveloped site due to the cost required. But when you take twenty acres and make it fifty, and now we're working with other landowners in East and West, potentially bringing them into development, well, not on our project in the city, but consistently, you can get seventy, eighty, ninety, and then it reduces the cost further. So the whole goal of this was to deliver infrastructure at a marketable cost.
Yeah, I, I agree. And then.
That was by design.
Right. And that probably is reflected definitely in the discounted rate of the property.
Or the fair market rate.
Right, yeah, yeah. So that, that makes sense. I just, you know, we'll, we'll see and, we'll, we'll see how this all works out. There is, there is that scenario that keeps me awake at night. So I'm putting a lot of trust in your corporation, right?
Okay, any further discussion, we'll move on to decision card presentation.
You just need to know what I'm doing next week. Am I putting this on a consent agenda, or is it a full council item?
Deputy Mayor?
I'm guessing full council item.
Full council, please.
Okay.
So we'll have the PSA and this on full council, they're two separate resolutions and two separate agenda bills, and we'll vote on the development agreement. We'll vote on the PSA first, because if the PSA fails, then the development agreement fails.
Okay. That makes sense. All right, let's move on to the decision card presentations. We'll try to get through as many of these tonight, and then what we are not able to get discussed, we'll go on to October eleventh, which is next Tuesday. Mr. Botticelli?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The chief financial officer and I were speaking this morning, and we were thinking if we got through the personnel decision cards tonight, that would be a good breaking point, and then on October eleventh, we can move on with, with the rest of the general fund ones. So if you'll indulge me for a minute, I'll just read through the six of these, and then we can open it up for discussion. So the first one is hiring one new police officer and outfitting with equipment and everything in twenty twenty-three. Adding a new records and disclosure clerk in the administrative services department to help with public disclosure and records management. Increasing the HR generalist to a full-time position, currently that's funded at point seven five. However, through the ARPA funds, we did have that position listed as a full-time position through the end of twenty twenty-two. Promote two new officers to the position of sergeant. We would not be backfilling these positions, so these would be internal promotions, and again, not, not backfilling the vacant officer positions. And then the last two were included in the mayor's proposed balanced budget. Add, either add two new custodians, full-time employees, to take the place of the current custodial contract. So that's a either-or decision. Either you have the employees or you, you keep the current contract. And then fully funding the emergency manager position that again is funded through twenty twenty-two, I believe, the end of twenty-two as well.
Okay. All right, well, let's move on to our one new police officer and outfitting. Let's have any discussion there. Oh, Councilmember Swatman.
Sure. So a question on that. So the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we have listed on that two hundred and thirty-six thousand, includes the car, the weapon training, da-da-da, et cetera. And there's no cost in twenty twenty-four, is that?
Would be salaries.
Is it just salary that does that? That's just because the additional, that's just.
Yeah. It was an error on my part. And Councilmember Evans caught this, and I believe I told him it would be a hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Okay. Thank you, Council. That makes sense. And in reference to that, I don't know, you know, where the discussion should be on that, because I have concerns that, want to make sure that our police force is at the appropriate level for today's environment, basically. You know, I'm, I ran on that as a, you know, as an election kind of thing, besides the water thing that gets me all hot and bothered, the police gets me all hot and bothered to make sure that we have proper public safety. So I, I don't know, you know, I would believe that there could be proposals that were floating around for more, but I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm far from an expert in public safety. So I don't know where the council's going to land on that, because, you know, again, I would think that I want to get public safety correct, because I can see, you know, that being a big issue. At least that's what gets talked about a lot out there that I hear, you know?
Oh, absolutely. Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hear originally this has had five officers requested, we dropped down to one officer. As you know, I've been numerous times where the police officers at night, and our night, night shift is very shorthanded. In the past, we've had two new officers come on with no additional support to them at night in the department. The problems in our city are increasing dramatically, and I think we should increase this to two, and not just one. The city needs that. We're still growing so much, and the crime is not going back at all, and he needs support what's going on, because when they have a call out there, you've got three officers right now going, they're all being titled one time. So I would like to suggest us change it to two officers.
And, and two thousand twenty-three?
Yes.
And there would be no need for any more in two thousand twenty-four?
Ms. Ryerson, could you address that issue, please?
Yeah, I believe the initial request put out by Chief Jeter was two in twenty-three and three in twenty-four. In order to present a balanced budget, we had to, the mayor, make some tough decisions. And if you are wanting to add to this, I would just need to know how we are going to fund that, since you have a balanced budget currently.
We take it out of someplace else, right?
Yeah.
And that's what I figured we'd do then.
Yep. Just need to know where.
There, there was a potential, I think, Chief, you mentioned something about a, a grant as well, that would partially fund three for up to three years, or what was, how that broke down?
Yes, Mayor McCullough authorized us to put in for a federal cops grant, and it would be one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per position, and that is over a three-year period, and that's per officer. And we did apply for that, applied for five, and we have not heard anything back yet. So roughly, you know, doing my quick math here, what is that, about thirty-five, forty thousand dollars a year that could offset that if we do, if we are successful in that grant?
Do we have a timeframe on that, Chief?
We were supposed to hear in September, and I believe it's October if I'm not mistaken, and we have not heard anything, so maybe no news is good news.
Well, that is typical government.
And so, you know, again, I don't know where the full council is on, you know, public safety issues, right? I know we have some professional input from some council members, but, and how, how do we get that right, is my question? You know, how, how am I comfortable as a council member passing a budget that has appropriate level of public safety dollars?
Deputy Mayor Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I will tell you that the state of Washington, Bonnie Lake, everybody in Washington as far as public safety officers, has been in the bottom, in fact, fifty out of fifty states for the last over ten years, I think even longer. Yeah. So i- if you go to the WASPIC website, it can, breaks it all down for you, and it's, it's really sad. So it is something we need to work on, it is something that, you know, Bonnie Lake does need more officers. Certainly one, if you want to do two, hey, I'm all for that, I'm okay with that. Again, we have to pay for it somehow, though, that's the problem, right? The cops grants will, will help if we can get those. We've got those before. And so there's, I think, a decent chance of getting those grants, but it is something that we, we will need. Some of the public safety stuff, you can't solve with just officers because of the legislation that has occurred at the state level, and that affects all of us, unfortunately. But it does help, right? It helps the immediacy of having the officers there and being able to answer the call. And when you have, say, two calls at night at the same time, they're both DVs, and you need four officers there, you know, initially, this will help that. So.
Yeah, because I see, you know, I perceive that Bonnie Lake has a large commercial corridor with a lot of theft activities and a lot of possible crime things and different things, and I, you know, don't know how far off my perception would be, but, you know, I, I hear from folks that, you know, like yourself, saying that we should supplement the officer account that we have, or, or resources, whatever they are. You know, and, and I want to get that, and, you know, Councilmember Carter and I and Deputy Mayor have had discussions before, and I said, I wanted to get that right first. You know, I don't, I don't really, whatever we do, I want to make sure to get the police right.
I do know Councilmember Evans has a question, however, I wanted to direct a question to Councilmember Watson. At our chambers meetings, do any of the major retailers ever attend those?
Walmart, the last time.
Walmart did. Have we ever had Target or Home Depot or Lowe's or any of those, or Costco?
No.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Evans?
I've got to go with Chief on this, and if he's asking for three and two, Sherry, what are our options here? How, what could we possibly do to support something like that? If not, maybe a, a minimum, one next year, two the following year, if not two and two. I mean, I don't know if we can get all the way up to the five, but, I mean, Chief's not throwing that out there because he wants to fatten up the softball team, he's doing that because that's what our, our city needs, so.
Do we have any options there? Yeah.
Mayor, did you want me to address that?
Yes, please.
Okay. My recommendation at this point would be to, I know you wanted to go with the highest level decision cards and kind of work your way down. I would go with what's been proposed with one, and then work with the rest of the money to see what you don't approve, to see what's left. I don't think you could get to three and two. I do think you could possibly get to two.
Two and two?
And then, you know, look and see what happens during this next biennium, mid-budget. I can certainly, you know, pay attention to see if we end up heading towards a recession or not, like the experts say. I can keep an eye on sales tax, and the other option would be BNO that goes to the general fund to support general fund staffing.
And just upon a clarification, Chief, you were asking not for three and two, but two and three, yes? Two and twenty-three and then three and twenty-four?
That is correct.
Okay. And actually, Ms. Ryerson, that answers my question. I was going to direct, I, I think we have, we know where this particular vote's going to go, and then I was going to ask if we could bring up the issue of adding a new officer once we get through the entire decision card process.
Yeah, I would recommend that. You have between the general fund, what we hope to get through today, which is FTE stuff, and what we hope to get through next time, you have about seven hundred thousand dollars, and that conveniently is how much money I have in twenty twenty-three. For twenty twenty-four, you have about four hundred and sixty-two, and that is also conveniently about what we have budgeted in twenty twenty-four. So if you weren't to approve some of these items, you could certainly fund two cops in twenty twenty-three, and then mid-budget, we could certainly look at twenty twenty-four to see if we can add more or not.
Okay. Well, regarding what we have on the agenda tonight, on this one issue here, have we discussed or were ready for a vote on at least the one officer, and then we can, when we go through the decision?
You know, because it's, in my mind, it's not as much of a, you know, if we do two police officers in two twenty-three and two in twenty-four, right? Then, you know, it's not an issue of what don't we do that's been proposed by the mayor, it's, it's another issue of, well, you know, let the mayor and the experts try to figure out how that, that can be done, and, you know, and then they can come back to us, because, you know, you have issues like sales tax and, and different issues that are projected, and, and those projections could be more conservative or less conservative, right? So, you know, it's, there's not an exact number of revenue. We could go into a recession, as Sherry's talking about, and this could all be in trouble real quick, right? Or, or the stock market could go up seven hundred points and, and you could not know.
Or we could have another COVID.
Exactly, right? You never can tell what the future leads, but that's why, you know, I think, I, you know, and y'all are much more experts. I would do the two, but I would do the two in two thousand twenty-three, two to two thousand twenty-four, and then, you know, go from there. You can always change those.
Councilmember Fuller?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Councilmember Watson and Deputy Mayor Carter. We absolutely, number one, here, our duty is to protect our citizens. I mean, that, that's governance one-on-one, and we need to figure out how to make this work.
Okay.
And if Chief says he needs five officers, and we can do five or possibly four, I'm all for, let's figure it out, because I, that's, that's the, the emails that I get, the concerns that I get when people find out I'm a council member, it's all safety-related.
And Councilmember Evans?
If, if I could, could we make a proposal to change this to two for tonight for twenty-three, and then look at a mid-biennium next year?
Hmm.
For an additional two to three? Anybody want to second that?
Yeah, I would second. That's his thoughts, that's great.
Good idea.
Okay, and we've discussed it, so when shall we vote on?
Well, we're not voting tonight, right? It's an action item, or not, it's just a.
We're voting on the decision.
Are we doing a decision?
Right.
Very good.
Okay, so.
Why make a motion to Mr. Evans, a proposal?
Very good. So, so tonight, are we voting on the one, or are we voting on the two, or what are we doing?
Two in twenty twenty-three is what I understand.
Okay, so all in favor of funding two officers to be hired in twenty twenty-three, say aye?
Aye.
Was that everybody? Do we, any, all opposed? And was there any abstentions? I, I didn't hear anything along those lines. Okay, I believe, and, and how, I do want to get a count of the vote.
The twenty-four program?
Did everybody, did everybody say aye, or did we have somebody that did not say?
Very good, so, so tonight, are we voting on the one or are we voting on the two or what are we doing?
Two in 2023 is what I understand.
Okay, so all in favor of funding two officers to be hired in 2023, say aye?
Aye.
Was that everybody? Do we, any, all opposed? And was there any abstentions? I, I didn't hear anything along those lines. Okay, I believe, and, and how, I do want to get a count of the vote.
The 24 program?
Did everybody, did everybody say aye or did we have somebody that did not say?
I think everybody said aye.
Good, all right, so that has been adopted.
Did, was the 2024 proposal part of that, just to, you know, program them?
20?
Yeah.
2024 was to be looked at at a mid-biennial budget review is my understanding.
That what it was?
Okay.
With a, I would say a definite preference was to, you know, lean that way, but we'll have to see, right?
Okay, well, let's move on to take a vote to accept the new records and disclosure specialist. We have any further discussion on that matter? Okay, we're ready to go to a vote. All in favor of accepting a new records and disclosure specialist position, say aye?
Aye.
How many ayes did we have? Can we raise our hands? We have one, two, three, four. And all opposed, say nay?
Nay.
And we have two nays. So I believe the vote was four to two, so that matter has been adopted. Next, we move on to the HR generalist decision card. All in favor, say aye? Oh, oh, any discussion on the matter?
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Evans.
I'm, I'm in favor of this just because we've been dealing with this for the last six years. And every year we figure out a way to come up with that extra point, 2, 0.25. It's kind of been a moot point. We've had a full-time person in that role for the last six years. Might as well, I mean, might as well make it permanent and not have to discuss this again in two years.
All right, Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, I've always in the past had noted this. I mean, we really don't need a full-time associate in the, in the building. I think 0.75, once we have a full staff here going, is sufficient and we need that position.
Okay. Any further discussion on the matter? Any more commentary? Ready for a vote? All right, all in favor of accepting the new records and disclosure specialist, say aye? Mr. Mayor. Oh. It's the? I'm sorry. It is, it's been a long night. Okay, we will now take a vote on the, on the HR generalist decision card. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How many ayes did we have? One, two, three, four. Any opposed? Say nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have one nay and we have one silence.
One nay.
Oh, it was a nay, okay, so we have two nays. So I believe the vote was four to two. So this matter has been adopted as well. All right, and let me get my numbers straight so I don't read one over again.
Sergeant positions.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mr. Vodapich. We will now take a vote to accept the promotion of two officers to the sergeant position. Do we have any discussion? Deputy Mayor Carter.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, I, I talked a little bit about this proposal with staff and whatnot. This wouldn't really cost us a lot more, we're out backfilling and, and all that kind of stuff. And it's important to have supervision on nights as we grow. And especially with the legislation that's gone through, we're kind of putting ourselves in a bad position by not having that. So I, I will be all for this and hopefully the council as well.
Uh, Councilmember Evans.
I just want to say thanks for bringing this forward. It, in, we have such longevity with our officers here and, and a promotion takes a long time in here because of that longevity. So being able to open up two promotions to deserving officers to become.
Sergeant.
Sargent, yes. I think it's going to be a great opportunity and I'm fully in support of this.
I, oh, Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, and I am supportive also because on the ride-alongs I've found numerous times, you have a question that's going on. They have a report, ask a sergeant, there's no one on duty, they got to call and wake them up. By the time they understand what's happening, it might be too late. So when you have someone responsible 24 hours a day in our city as a sergeant, you have to call.
Absolutely, in fact, I was going to direct a, a question to our chief with that, with the promotions of the two sergeants and the concern that the council had with our first decision card. As far as our night shift in promoting the two sergeants, would that mean that one would be on duty during a night shift at all times or how would that work?
Yes, the thought would be we would have 24-hour supervision. By moving two sergeants to graveyard shift, we would have day shift, swing shift and graveyard sergeant coverage. We would have one or two sergeants on day shift and they work opposite days, two on swings that work opposite except for Thursday and then two on graveyard as well. And, and to Councilmember Watson's point too, and this is something I've struggled with since I've been here, is we have our brand-new officers that are with us not for very long. Some of them are brand-new, like are ones that just get out of the academy and where do they go? They go to night shift. And which is where a lot of the, the stuff happens. And if they don't have supervision out there, it, it, we are just a phone call away, but sometimes you don't have time to make that phone call. So this is an area that I've seen that we've been very vulnerable in and not having supervisors out there, especially to, to watch over our newest officers. So yes, we would have 24-hour coverage. And if, if a sergeant called in sick, we would be able to adjust one or the other, hopefully to, to cover that gap. And there is a little bit of overlap. There's a little bit of overlap between day shift and swing shift, about an hour. And there's a little bit of overlap between swing and grave and it's about three hours. But that's usually our busiest time is that, that swing graveyard time.
And to piggyback on that, our issue that we had this time last year when you made that wonderful presentation on the legislative changes that Deputy Mayor brought up, say that we need supervisory approval to pursue. Would that, would that speed this up?
Very much so. There, there's some contention that it can be the senior officer, but the, the officers aren't really comfortable in making that call if they haven't had the training and, and they're not getting compensated to be a supervisor. They're worried about the liability for making those decisions.
Okay.
So yes, this would very much help us with the legislative changes that have to be made by a supervisor. They wouldn't have to get on the phone and try to find one that's awake.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on the matter? Any questions? Okay, we're ready to take the matter to a vote. So all in favor of accepting the promotion of two officers to sergeant, say aye?
Aye.
Was that everybody? I believe that was a unanimous vote, Madam Clerk. So that has been accepted. Let's move on to vote on, to accept the two new custodians at this time. Do we have, oh, Councilmember McLemmons.
Yeah, so is the current contract, are, are there usually two custodians provided as part of that?
Ah, yes, there are. And the, the current amount is noted in the notes, there is 156,000 annually.
Yeah, so is, are there, are there any times when we, when they use more than two custodians?
I don't believe so, no.
Will that be sufficient for the new public works facility?
We believe it to be. You know, practice, in practice, we'll, we'll see, but we believe at this time it would be.
Well, Mr. Johnson, we can get you out there.
No. I, I've got several other, just other hats, let's just add that to you, that's fine.
Uh, Councilmember Evans.
Sherry, could you correct us for me? But is, are they currently two full-time employees or is it one and a half?
So, um, thank you for allowing me to, to kind of clarify this. Right now, we actually have a contract and it's for service. So we typically see, and Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, but we typically see one and a quarter to one and a half employees. If you decide not to go with the contract, which is kind of why it's in blue and not really green, because it's an either-or scenario here. We either need the contract at 156,000, which will be removed down below, or two employees. Now, Ryan and I have discussed this and two employees would allow him to take that discretionary time and have the employees maybe work on some other projects. And it would also cover if somebody were on vacation or sick. Like I said, right now, there's one and a quarter to one and a half folks working in the buildings.
So we would be increasing by half to 0.75 employees for less cost annually?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
And if I may, the, one of the big benefits here, and I'd have to work with HR to make sure the job, job descriptions are crafted in such a way to support this, but when custodial activities aren't, you know, when those are completed, when they have, we can, are able to, to get away from that, we can use that extra time to help take some of the load off of what Mike Engler and our facilities department is currently putting up with.
And I'm not sure if all the folks around council when Gary came up with the issue, but what happened was we found out we weren't paying prevailing wage initially on the contract and it is subject to prevailing wage and that's what shot the contract costs up so high. And now it makes it comparable to have two employees instead of a contract.
And just to clarify, Mr. Johnson, when you mentioned Mike Engler, what duties are you talking about?
So Mike Engler does our maintenance worker three in our facilities division and he covers everything from, you know, fixing a paper towel dispenser to HVAC improvements and repair and maintenance, trying to, trying to keep things running at the public safety building. So he covers a lot of ground. And so if we could utilize this to help take some of the small stuff off of his plate, it'd really help him a lot.
Well, given the condition of our public safety building, that is quite a task. Councilmember McLemmons.
Yeah, how long until those two positions will garner a promotion?
Promotion to?
Promotion to?
Well, you're going to hire two custodians and are they just going to stay custodians? They're never going to get promoted? There's not going to be seniority? We're not going to wind up with a chief custodian?
Director of?
A director of custodial services?
Currently, they are, currently they are in the ASME union. Uh, and that position is in the contract as a custodian. There, there is nothing beyond that.
Okay, so it's just custodian. So this, we're not going to see wage growth over the years as somebody, we hire them in and then 10 years from now, they're like, I should, how do I get paid more?
Sure, like, like any other position in the union there, they come in at a scale. So there would be growth according to that scale, but it does reach a certain point where that tops out. So you're correct, I mean, they, it would be somewhat limited in that they would top out at a certain point.
Yeah, Councilmember Fuller, thank you.
Yeah, I was just wondering with wages and benefits and then raises over the years, at what point do we bypass the 156,000?
It's a good question. And at the same time that, that wages increase, so do quotes for services due to inflation and markups on materials and so on. And it's important to point out that this estimate of 156,000, we based that on the current pricing of the contract and came up with a per square foot cost. So likely, we're going to find that when we actually go to, if we were to renegotiate this scope of services for custodial services, if we want trans-blue, for instance, we're going to find that it's probably going to be more than 156,000. So I, I, I feel like it to answer your question that the wage increases are going to keep pace or some, be somewhat behind what the contract escalation would be.
Okay, Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, you found me over here.
Yes.
All times you started. Way back when, we had a person on duty doing that for us, remember that?
What?
We had a custodian doing that for us. He got hurt.
Oh.
And then at that time, we discussed it and we were, we should hire somebody else. We found it was more, less expensive for us to hire outside service. Every time we hire one more associate in our building, it causes another expense to have ongoing. And along with the benefits to go with that, the service far as I know has been doing a good job for us, the outside service. And that way, their employer can take care of their benefits and their needs that way. And I don't think we want to add more staff to, to our buildings and where these outside could take care of it. I don't agree with having two more people doing that for us.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Watson. Councilmember Evans.
Just to counterpoint, we are opening a brand-new building that would increase the cost of that contract amount as well that this is already being absorbed in. And when we initially talked about it, like Ryan had mentioned, that was non-pervailing wage and prevailing wage has gone up since the last contract amount. So to answer Gwendolyn's, as our wages go up, so too will the contract. So will there ever be a crossover point? I don't know that that exists in this scenario, but we are getting half to three-quarter more employees for less money. And even with that, that step rate against the contract, I don't think we'll ever exceed what a contract amount would be with two employees.
Okay, any further discussion, Councilmember McLemmons?
I, I think that, you know, that crossover inevitably does usually occur about 10 to 15 years into the lifespan of most contracts. That's why typically a lot of large government contracts are negotiated and given to new contractors on that scale so that they can go out and hire new hires because entry-level positions are cheaper than 15-year positions, right? And I think the other thing here to consider is that if you hire a custodian into the city, does that mean that you're hiring somebody who's going to expect to retire as a custodian from the city? Where if you have a contract and somebody's a custodian, are they really expecting they're going to retire as a custodian with that firm? Or are they just using that as a stepping stone? That's, for me, that's, those are the things that I think about here. That's all I have.
And Ms. Ryerson, did you have a comment on that?
Yes, thank you. It, the prevailing wage issue is the largest issue here at Councilmember McLemmons. We don't, we can't dictate what the, the rate is for the contract. They have to pay prevailing wage, which means they're not going to go hire the newest, you know, person at the lowest hourly rate. That's the biggest issue we're running into here. Councilmember Watson, I would agree with you that it probably didn't make sense back before we were paying prevailing wage to have these people as staff. As Councilmember Evans pointed out, being able to increase the amount of time for the same amount of money made sense. When I budgeted for this, I put them in at the mid-level position, assuming they had experience. So really, it's even a, a little bit greater savings than what I have shown here if they were to be hired in at step one. I put them in at step three of, out of a five-step process, just as a, a budget average.
So did the prevailing wage thing change? Is that what it was?
Yeah, so we discovered that, oh gosh, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I want to say four years ago. I'm not even sure how it came up, but Gary kind of came to us and said, guess what? Pervailing wage does apply to custodial services. And so we worked through that with the attorney and sure enough, it does apply. And that's how this kind of became a, a bigger issue. And now adding a building is adding costs and like Ryan said, he estimated probably low, it will probably cost us more than what we have budgeted once we go out for that.
But the record showed that Mr. Vodapich, his expression showed that he was really trying to correct you and he really wanted you wrong.
I was trying to remember if it was 2018 or 2019.
Okay, Councilmember Evans.
Do we know what the, the prevailing wage class is on this? Is it just a laborer Western Washington step three?
I would have to look. I think they flat-out call out custodian in there. I could go back through my documents and send them to you from when Gary Leaf worked on this.
Okay, just, just quickly looking at Pierce County laborers only, Western Washington step three, it's $46 an hour and some change versus a 2022?
We are not paying that.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
No, 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 I mean, we might be paying that in the contract. We are not paying that if we hired staff. That is not.
Yeah, that, that's to my point. Yeah, that would be the equivalent of both the employees.
Councilmember Fuller, then.
Yeah, so if we do get a couple more maintenance people, then are they going to be able to do maintenance on all of the city buildings? Like the police department and the Justice Center? Or is this going to just be for the, the public works? Would be for the whole gamut?
They would, they'd be working in all the city facilities. So, so conceivably, yes, they could be doing maintenance tasks in any of the buildings.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on the matter? Are we ready to take to a vote? All right, we've, all in favor of accepting two new custodians at this time, say aye?
Aye.
How many ayes did we have? Could we raise our hands, please? One, two, three, four. All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
And we have two nays. So the vote we have is four to two. This decision card is passed, so let's move on to?
No, I'm still confused.
Really?
What?
Let's move on to accept the first decision on this matter. Any discussion on the matter? Councilmember Evans.
I know I've been pushing for this since I got on the council. I know is one of, one of the things Woody had been pushing for and he and I were in alignment on this. I think having Regine on has been a big improvement to our emergency management. What she's already put out with the, the alerts that we're getting. I think having that two years ago during the fire would have been a much greater improvement of communication and having a plan for that. I know what's upcoming with what she's working on is going to be great. And I know the alert system is going through some testing phases. I've already signed up for it. It's a great addition to the city. I think having that role is, is imperative in the growth of our city and the planning for our emergency management as a city. So I'm fully in support of this.
Yes, I believe the fire two years ago showed that Bonnie Lake is not immune to any emergencies. So any further discussion? Any further commentary? Council, uh, Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. She's done a great job for us, the city, while we've had her this time. I don't understand why we can't have the position covering several cities at, at one. I don't understand why we can't have the position covering several cities at once, not just our city. I don't see a full, this is a full-time job ongoing, has been while we first hired her on, putting the program together. But I think it would be benefit, more benefit to us and more cities that we had a person overseeing two or three cities in this one position.
Are you talking about, uh, something like the Puget, uh, Puget Sound Emergency Management System?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
I just can't, I don't see, after we get all, everything put together, why we need a full-time person to run this, this program just in our city. And like I said, she's done a remarkable job, but I would like to see us go out for other cities involved with that.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Watson. That'll be something that, uh, my office will look into. Councilmember Swatman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and I would agree with Councilmember Watson that, you know, uh, the individual's done an excellent job here for us in, inside the city. Um, and I've always, you know, when this first started, I've always been something that we needed to have access to in the city. But it's always been my, um, my contention that it should be kind of an organizational thing that, uh, we subscribe to. Um, and I know that she's doing an awesome job, you know, uh, connecting with many of the external organizations. I can just see that emergency management, you know, those types of issues that are, that are global, that, that, the cities interact with each other so much and everything like that. I would be, mm, you know, me, I'm like, I'd be happy to pay $137,000 to subscribe to an emergency management service and get X number of hours from it as opposed to having an employee. So, you know, I'll be opposed to having an internal employee.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Swatman. Councilmember McLemons, I believe you had hand up first.
Yeah, can, can we get where we're at with, uh, the total? Where we're at with personnel right now? Because I, I kind of, I can't do the math.
Uh, we added the bottom plus 130.
We added two new officers, uh, the records and disclosure clerk, uh, the quarter time HR generalist increase, uh, internal promotion of two officers, and then custodian was, yes.
That was a yes.
It should be the, the bottom line total plus one officer of 130, something like that.
Is it 130 for one officer? Or do we, we have to get a car?
Oh, for, yeah, for the initial year, yeah, yeah.
It would be 236 this year. So your total now is 636,000.
Yeah, and Councilmember Evans, did you have a comment?
Oh, I was just going to say, if you're willing to pay a portion of it.
Oh, all of it? Yeah, I would just, I don't have a problem with it.
Pay the whole thing for a portion of the hours, why not?
Sure.
Why not get the full bang for your buck?
Just, I'm, I'm a big fan of, you know, resources that need a lot of connectivity, because I know that Pierce County and everybody does an awesome job. And that's exactly what she's doing today, you know, is connecting with all those. I, I, I just, you know, in the future, cities, I think, will have far fewer employees. They'll have, you know, excellent directors and managers, and they'll have access to a bunch of resources. And I'm not an internal kind of person of hiring internal, because it becomes too kind of, uh, you know, siloed.
And, and I know we've had this, uh, discussion before, and, and that is, you still need someone here on staff to?
No, you need access to someone, that's, see, I know you're, I know you're a person in the desk kind of thing, right? You know, I, I don't, you know, they don't need to appear in a cubicle to me to be there.
Yeah, but someone still needs to coordinate that on, on the city side of things.
Exactly, exactly.
And that was where Woody never had the?
Yeah.
The, the time to do that. I, I know for a fact Chuck doesn't have the time to do that.
Well, it's in their job description. But, oh, that's a different rabbit trail, sorry.
Okay, but, but nonetheless, there's no one currently on staff other than Regine that actually would?
Exactly, yeah.
Be able to do that, so.
And that's why I think, you know, you'd be belonging to another organization, you know, that'd be belonging to a, a, an organization that we would subscribe to.
Which we do, which is PC Alert and all the other Pierce County stuff.
I know.
Councilmember Watson.
You know, just like when the fire department went to one, one department around all the cities and stuff, I realize you're grouping several groups together, but it's the same principle. They, when I've talked to them before, that was the best thing they ever did. They even just talked about maybe collecting police departments the same way too. But the benefits from having one person or group oversee in all the cities would be so much more beneficial for us than just having us, one person in our city all, just like we do the fire department.
I see, okay, Councilmember Evans.
But if, if what you're saying is true, the fire department is an entity, and you just said that they figured out that the best way for them to control their own destiny was to have one person doing that. They span multiple jurisdictions, but the fire department itself is one municipality.
No, it's not. What do you mean? We, we subscribe, it's East Pierce Fire and Rescue.
Yeah.
It covers us and Milton and Sumner.
But East Pierce Fire and Rescue didn't have a Bonnie Lake fire inspector. They didn't have a Sumner fire inspector. They had an East Pierce fire inspector.
There you go, you just made my case, right?
But they are their own jurisdiction in the fact that they have their own governing body, just as us.
You might find that if you include four or five or six cities, that they'll say, this is a great idea. So instead of having one each city, you may have, end up having three or four people in a smaller group, but doing the same thing.
But then you have some. Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I might, if, some of you will remember, Woody tried that.
Yeah.
And had no success.
Yeah, we, we.
Woody first reached out to East Pierce Fire and Rescue and tried to get them to take over emergency management. They decided not to take us up on that offer. Then Woody went out and went to the South Prairies and the Buckley's and the Eaton Bills of, of the world and pitched this coalition, if you will, in which we would hire an employee, and we would have an emergency manager for, you know, all the cities and an umbrella-type group. Now, certainly, times have changed. I, I don't quite honestly know who would take on that endeavor. Uh, we don't have the staff bandwidth to try and coordinate an emergency management coalition amongst cities without an emergency management manager on staff.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Pollard, then, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I know that Regine got the, the generator for, the, that we thought was going to be like 750,000. It's ended up going to be like around, uh, 200,000 or something like that, a lot less. And then we're only going to have to pay 15% of that. So she's already, like, saved the city.
5% of that.
Yeah, 5%, right. So, um, she's saved us a ton of money, um, and is setting us up for success in an emergency situation, which we did not have, um, during the fires. I know I got evacuated, which wasn't fun. Um, and it would have been nice to be able to contact somebody and figure out, you know, what the heck is going on around here. And I didn't know who to call, I didn't know what to do. I was running around with my head cut off, and my phone wasn't working. So I, I think having a, a center where people can come, and she set up the, the water stations for the summer when it was really hot. Um, didn't have very many people use it this summer, but I think in the future, it would probably, um, get more use, and.
Uh, that endeavor was also recognized federally. We actually got a bit of notice on that. So I know that's a benefit to the city.
And is there, is there possibility of, you know, maybe getting grants of some kind to help pay for her salary in the future? Or, um, you know, to, because I know this, part of, part of this funded came out of the ARPA funds, I believe, for her initially. And now we're looking at keeping her. Um, and I think she's, in my mind, uh, she has paid for herself.
Now, the question that I have with that, that I know that we were in a different position this time last year, but with us bringing Regine on as the manager, have we gotten our supplemental people trained yet? Or have we even looked at that yet? Because I do know that the people who have volunteered to be part of this had not had any training just yet. Is, is that an issue that has been addressed?
Uh, that's still a work in progress.
Okay.
That's on her to-do list.
Okay.
You know, the first thing was, uh, up, up, updating our continuity of operations plan. She's working on the?
Coordinated emergency management.
Management plan now. Uh, she's our representative on the Epic Coalition, the work partnership with, with Piala. Uh, but she has two different emergency management teams, uh, identified right now, kind of a leadership team, and then the entire emergency management team that both meet once a month.
Okay.
And she's got ham radios and?
She's got the hammer.
Training for that, and she's going to make it for the citizens, too.
Very good. Uh, Councilmember McLemons.
Still struggling with the math. So what's the 400 in red at the bottom there? What's that telling me?
Uh, Ms. Ryerson?
400 is, yep, so the 400 is, uh, what you see above, your police officer, your records and disclosure, your HR and promotion of two officers. What's not included is the stuff, ah, my phone is going to die here, hold on. I guess we've been talking too long.
Green's already in the budget. And the blue was partially in the budget.
Green is already in the budget, yes, sorry, I just lost my, um.
Oh, so the blue was not in the budget?
The blue was in the budget as a contract, so that would go away and be replaced by? Color.
And? 636,322. You have about 700,000 to spend, which would leave you a balance of just a little over 63,000 if you approve, um, well, you've already approved all four requests, added an officer. Emergency management's already in the budget, so if you don't approve it, it would come back out. Your other option, which I was just getting ready to send you an email, um, for next week, you have $365,000 worth of budget requests coming forward. My proposal would be, um, to use ending fund balance. In looking at what you have coming forward next week, they are all one-time costs, which would make sense to use ending fund balance. Um, as Councilmember Swatman pointed out, I work on projections. Um, my expertise and best, uh, you know, guesses, if you will, um, to come up with what, what the balance. And it's usually, um, pretty accurate, but there is room for unknowns, recession, unknown. COVID, uh, the mayor mentioned COVID. Uh, I would love another COVID, because we've actually made more money during COVID than we've made ever, so.
That inflation rate.
If it brings anybody, I'm happy. So I, I mean, I see where you're struggling with, how are we going to get money for some of this? You absolutely can use ending fund balance for next week's decision cards. They're all one-time type, um, expenditures, and I wouldn't hesitate to do that. We have added more than $1 million to ending fund balance every year. So I think it would be a good use of your money.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ryerson. Um, given the time, do, do we have any further questions or discussion? Or ready to vote on the matter? Believe we are ready to vote on the matter. Okay, we will now take a vote to accept, uh, the emergency manager, uh, decision card. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
How many ayes were that? Can we raise our hands, please? We have one, two, all, uh, any opposed?
No, no, no.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
You had three.
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 One, two, three. Okay, so we have, uh, we have three ayes. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, and we have three nays.